Five fifteen, it's November twenty-sixth. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners. But first, if we can have invocation and pledge of allegiance, we have Chaplain Kalis here. If you could come forward.
As the mayor mentioned, my name is Bruce Kalis. I serve as one of the chaplains for the Bismarck Police Department and on behalf of Crisis Care Chaplaincy, thank you for the opportunity to open in prayer. I would just have us all stand for prayer and then we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this evening. We are reminded during this week of Thanksgiving just how much we have to be thankful for. Thank you for your ever-present love for us. Thank you for family and friends and for opportunities to serve you and to serve each other. Thank you for the privilege of living in this great nation and this state of North Dakota and for the freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for the city of Bismarck, for the many blessings and opportunities that this local community offers for those of us who live here. I pray today for those who are in the offices that govern this community. I ask your Spirit guide, as they make decisions, that they be wise and godly and would prove to be in the best interests of the community. Thank you for the freedom citizens have to speak up and be heard, whether we agree or differ, for in discussion and diversity comes strength in our community. I pray for our mayor and those who work in that office and for each commissioner, as well as other elected officials and city workers. I ask that each one would be blessed by you as they carry out their responsibilities. I also pray for our first responders, those who put themselves in harm's way to protect the citizens of this community, our law enforcement, firefighters, EMS workers, dispatch, healthcare workers, and others. Please protect them in their line of duty so that they might protect those of us who have placed our trust in them. So God, guide in everything said and done this evening. I'm thankful for each and every one of these blessings, in Jesus' name, amen. Say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. If we can call the meeting in order, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zanker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. At this point in time, we have public comment for anything on the consent agenda or on the regular agenda that is not a public hearing. Anyone who would wish to speak, please come forward and state your name, sign in, and tell us what you're speaking about, please.
I am speaking on an item that I am assured is on the consent agenda. And this is the Disbursements Committee, which I have heard about from various well-informed sources, and it is examining issues and determining how to disburse money from the Half-Cent Sales Tax Initiative.
It's actually not even considered tonight. That particularly is not.
Okay. Well, then my...
We do have a call for the public hearing for the sales tax ordinance to enact it.
All right. Well, thank you, because I was wondering why I didn't see it on the agenda but was assured that it was. So I appreciate the clarification, and I will await the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Yep. Anyone else who wish to speak, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no one, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
No.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Carries. Moving to the regular agenda, item A, public hearing on final Arrived 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan for acceptance of the resolution and... I'm not sure who's going to present, open it up. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. Yes, I'll open. My name is Kim Ripple. I am a representative of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I'm here tonight to introduce our MPO consultant, Jason Carby with HDR, and also the Arrived 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Arrived 2050 is a major planning document that assists the MPO, our local jurisdictions, of course, which Bismarck is one of, and North Dakota DOT in envisioning and preparing for the future of the local transportation network. More specifically, it helps the local municipalities use federal transportation dollars to improve the network through expansion or maintenance. We've been working on the project for about a year and a half, and Jason's presentation will provide an outline of how we prepared for the study, how public input was used throughout, and what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue upon possible acceptance of this master plan. The Bismarck Planning and Zoning Commission, at their meeting of October twenty-third, recommended acceptance of the MTP. Tonight, the MPO is requesting that the Board of City Commissioners approve the Arrived 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan through a resolution of receipt, which was included as part of your meeting packet. The MPO advertised this meeting as a public hearing, and so either Jason or I would be happy to stand for questions at the conclusion of his presentation. I'll let Jason Carby take it away.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm going to really quick get some slides pulled up here. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it. Really quick, I'm going to give you a very high-level overview of the content of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and answer any questions you have. It's a pretty extensive document. It's updated every five years. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail unless you guys want to know some more. I can go into more detail, but here's a quick overview of the chapters and the contents. I'm going to walk through each of them, but essentially, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is one of the very core documents that the MPO puts together. It needs to be updated every five years. It looks, you know, this is Arrived 2050, so it looks out through the year 2050. We basically go through a systematic process of identifying all of the needs, and one of the key things on the back end is that we need to be fiscally constrained. It needs to basically be reasonably fundable, and so that's the plan that we are presenting There's a chapter that basically goes through goals, objectives, and performance measures. I think the key takeaway here is that there are some federal requirements here and some of the things that we really need to check the box on, but also through the extensive engagement and working with local staffs, it is a locally tailored document. We established a set of goals in going through that engagement process. Safety is one of the most critical concerns today, is reducing serious injury in fatal crashes. Economics, resiliency, efficiency, and reliability, maintenance, having a forward thinking, you know, looking to the future in technology, making sure bicyclists, pedestrians, and transit users are included, and also engaging with making sure everyone's getting access to transportation services through equity. Had three different phases of public engagement, a lot of different outreach opportunities on each side of the river, but basically, a lot of in-person, some open house, online engagement. Worked really extensively with a steering committee, the technical advisory committee with the MPO, the staff of planners and engineers with all the local jurisdictions, and also the policy board. There's a chapter on kind of the MPO area today, just kind of a background on, you know, trends, growth, demographics, commuting patterns, kind of laying that foundation of, you know, what's going on in the metro area today. Then some more in-depth on, a very extensive chapter, kind of goes really into where the transportation system is today. I'm not going to go through all of it, but, you know, it talks a lot about safety, not only trends across the metro area, but some of the hotspots for crashes in the metro area. Also looks at levels of recurring congestion, and, you know, we've got some pockets of that popping up today, but as we go into the future, anticipate more growth, you know, and so summarized all of that into all these different areas. I think one of the big takeaways is the need to start addressing cross-area travel. A lot of north-south travel has been a big issue in Bismarck historically. In Mandan, a lot of times, it's been kind of east-west travel. So it's how can we kind of start laying out plans for these future corridors to provide higher levels of cross-area travel. Then we got into the future conditions. We, you know, are anticipating based on the very healthy historical growth that the Bismarck-Mandan area has had, we anticipate about forty percent growth by the year 2050 in households and population, and kind of looked at where, in talking with planning and engineering staffs, where a lot of that growth might happen, and then looked at how that would affect travel patterns, and so anticipate quite a bit of growth in traffic levels as we move towards the future. And these growth patterns really indicated where there were future needs to consider future improvements to the system. So that, you know, what we talked about here basically set the baseline for existing and future needs. Then we started to look at a range of potential strategies, you know, how could we address those, and came up, you know, in development with, you know, getting ideas from the public and stakeholders, with local staffs, and a lot of ongoing planning work that all the cities and the MPO and counties have been doing. Came up with a list of potential alternatives, so, you know, we've got a wide list of projects here. We've got, you know, new river crossing, new interchange options, you know, how do we take some of those kind of existing kind of rural, maybe gravel, dirt roads and start to convert them into, you know, urban paved, you know, curb and gutter? And what are some of those opportunities? And so kind of went through this list, and most of the projects on this list are part of what we'd call the vision or the illustrative plan. These are good ideas, but they aren't necessarily things that, with our current budget, can afford, and so we kind of worked through that process, you know, looking at reasonable funding levels, and I won't get into a ton of detail on this, other than to say that, you know, costs in the transportation industry have been going up faster than revenues, and so purchasing power over the long term, you know, is anticipated to decrease. And so with all of that, you know, that context of what that long list of needs were, you know, what our anticipated current and future funding levels would be, and then kind of some of the constraints on, you know, the, how funding comes in and how, you know, project sizes and making sure we can spend funding levels within a current year or within a single year, developed a fiscally constrained list. And you can see, it's a blend of street reconstruction, maintenance projects, some opportunities to maybe do some widening projects, but also, you know, taking care of the trails that we've got and expanding some future trails, along with some safety projects at some critical intersections. And then finally, the last chapter again is, again, this is a federally required plan. This is really the point of this, is that went through and kind of demonstrated how we developed this locally tailored plan, but it was compliant with federal regulations. And so that was a very high-level overview. If you have any specific questions, Kim and I could field those, but I didn't want to take too much of your time with all of the details when we get to your specific questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I've got one.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Jason, very good work, and it's really great that we're doing this long-term planning, but I mentioned that the last time this was presented, the probability or possibility of bringing back rail passenger service to Bismarck and across the state, is there any way we can include that in the long-term plan?
We are starting, we do have a reference to continuing to monitor that ongoing work and making sure that, you know, the, one of the ongoing efforts, we do mention in the implementation chapter essentially, that there's a lot of ongoing work and future studies that need to get done. As that study kind of comes to fruition, and I know that's something near and dear to Kim's heart if she wants to talk about that more, but that as that studying and planning effort goes on, that the MPO and its partner jurisdictions will continue to kind of coordinate on that. So I think there's more to come on that one, but we have made a reference to it. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Doesn't look like right now.
Okay.
This is a public hearing to accept the resolution. So anyone who wishes to speak to this, please come forward, sign in, and state your name. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no public comment, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to accept the report and resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item B is a public hearing to release the water sanitary sewer and stormwater drainage easements on Lot Two, Block One of First Responders Third Edition. Lauren?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Fowler Property Group LLC and One Sixty-One Commercial LLC are requesting to release the forty-nine-foot water sanitary sewer and storm drainage easement on Lot Two, Block One, First Responders Third Edition. The property is located in East Bismarck, south of East Main Avenue, along the west side of Fifty-Second Street Southeast, on the north side of Midwest Drive. The project is comprised of seventy-three thousand six hundred fifty-three square feet within one lot in one block. The original easements were granted with the plot of First Responders Third Edition, which was recorded this previous May of 2024. The owner and applicant intend to replace these easements by putting them in the area currently defined as a forty-five-foot access easement. Additionally, a ten-foot water main easement will be placed on the west side of Lot Two as a continuance of the existing ten-foot water main easement on Lot One to the north. Also, an additional ten-foot wide general utility easement will extend west from the current utility easement on the east side of Lot Two through the fifty-foot landscape buffer to the southeastern corner of Lot One, Block One of that subdivision. Since these lots are within Bismarck City limits, staff have determined that the new replacement easement should be dedicated and accepted by, and be accepted by, the city of Bismarck. The City Commission will be asked to accept the new easements at a future meeting, once that document is completed and not in draft form. These replacement easements will be recorded in conjunction with the release of these easements if the Bismarck City Commission approves of this release request tonight. By city policy, release of any easements other than franchise utility easements requires a public hearing with the City Commission. Owners of adjacent property owner or properties have been notified of this public hearing. Staff have not received any public comments regarding this request. As a result of all findings contained within the staff report, city of Bismarck staff find that the release of the stormwater and drainage easement and the sanitary sewer and water main easements within Lot Two, in conjunction with the dedication of new easements, would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and general state, relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval for the release of the water sanitary sewer and storm drainage easement on Lot Two, Block One, First Responders Third Edition, with the condition that replacement water sanitary sewer and stormwater and drainage easements are recorded in conjunction with this request, and that they are accepted prior to recordation of the subject easement release. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions? Doesn't look like any.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no public comment, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item C is a public hearing on ordinance sixty-five ninety-three to amend the resisting arrest ordinance. I believe it was a clarification. Is there anything, Janelle? So this is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this ordinance, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Seeing and hearing, no further public comment. Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item D, public hearing on ordinance sixty-five ninety-four to amend the Public Human Relations Committee ordinance, and I believe the primary purpose of the change was to adjust the number of members, and that's really, is there anything else?
And conform to city policy.
Okay.
Appropriate review.
Okay. So that's the change. Is there anyone who wish to speak to this ordinance change, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no one, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing, none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item is public hearing on ordinance sixty-five ninety-five to amend the appeal process for city employees. Is there any further introduction to that? Okay. So it's a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to that, please come forward. Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Hearing and seeing no further public comment. Public comment period is closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item F, public hearing on ordinance sixty-five ninety-six to amend the persons under the influence of intoxicating liquor or any other drugs or substances not to operate vehicle and related penalties and so forth. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this ordinance change, please come forward. A second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item G is we'll receive a report from Public Health Director regarding the progress made on the community solution for homelessness and behavioral health. Renee?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have a few slides I think you had put me up. Thank you for allowing some time for me tonight. I do have an update for you, just to provide some information for you on some of the progress that's been made since the August twenty-seventh meeting, when I was given the direction to start having conversations about community solution to address homelessness and behavioral health issues. That was on the twenty-seventh of August, and since then, we've had, in September, I did presentation to the Bismarck Burley Combined Commissions Committee, also did a presentation to the Burley County Commission with the same information that you received, and then had a listening session with law enforcement to gather feedback, input, and experiences, law enforcement, the local hospitals, and public health, and this represented participants from Bismarck, Burley, Morton, Mandan, and the city of Bismarck, all the areas as far as law enforcement goes, and then also having to do with the hospitals and public health, Western Plains Public Health. And this was basically a listening session to get information from law enforcement, getting their feedback on their needs. We had some hospital staff there, behavioral health providers from both hospitals were there, just gaining insights and experiences to listen to some of the challenges that they are experiencing. Following that, in October, we had a kickoff meeting, and that was with potential key stakeholders to talk about an actual community triage facility. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about this diagram. I know that you may have seen a former pyramid, but I did some updates to this one. We had done some presentations to the public, to community stakeholders, and really felt that some tweaking was needed in order to provide a more clear and refined infographic as far as what we're trying to accomplish with this community effort. We really want to focus on the bottom tier, which is the tier in red, and that is to help the people that are experiencing a crisis. This pyramid highlights a continuum of needs and starts with individuals in crisis, going up to yellow, which is vulnerable but in need of support, and then ultimately reaching the top of the tier, which is stable and able to function in society. And when you look at the number of resources available, you can see that a majority of the resources, of course, fall in that yellow and green category, people that are looking for help and ongoing support. We have a lot of community organizations in place that are able to get people on track and functioning again, but when it comes to that bottom tier in crisis, this is an important point where we have a high need with limited amount of resources. And so what we're trying to do is really fill in some of the gaps. Law enforcement, emergency responders, the local hospitals are the ones that are being strained, and we hope to augment this area with additional support services. I do want to talk briefly about some of the services that are currently in place. The Dakota Foundation, many people may not be aware of the work that they do in the community, just because it's behind the scenes, more or less, but they offer crisis stabilization services for those experiencing mental health and substance abuse challenges, and that is in a facility, it's called Alternative Care Services. It's an ACS program. It's a fifteen-bed residential treatment program. It is staffed twenty-four-seven. That is something that they work with West Central Human Service Center, under a contract with them, to provide that service. So that is operational, and you'll see that on the bottom tier with the other emergency services. The location that they operate does not have medical detox services, however, so they are doing some withdrawal management to the point that they don't need medical intervention. When they do need a medical intervention, it would then need a transportation to go to the emergency room for stabilization. So that would be a gap as far as care for that individual, and also puts an additional strain on the emergency rooms for that reason. In addition, I wanted to mention ministry on the margins. They do operate a low-barrier coffee house to provide a place for individuals that might be under the influence, for them to get out of the elements. They don't test for substances upon arrival. It is a critical resource, but obviously, it's not a shelter, and it's not operating twenty-four-seven. And so they're not listed there, but just because it's not a long-term solution, just an additional resource that was started as a pilot to fill the gap. I do also want to mention that the medical detox facility that we are hoping to augment the ACS... the ACS program with is not operational either at this point. There's currently not a medical detox facility in the state of North Dakota, but there is someone that is interested in getting that service provided in the community if the opportunity presented itself. And so I've had a few questions from people. I just want to clarify, from the public, they don't necessarily understand who we're trying to serve. The community services and a lot of the organizations in the community, the nonprofits, are individuals that are helping the people that are in the yellow and green stage. They're vulnerable, they're willing to get help, they want to make change in their life. But people that are at the bottom tier in crisis, whether it be from behavioral health, mental health, crisis, or substance abuse and addiction, are really at that bottom tier, and it's a different subset of population. And so all of the other resources we have in the community are obviously important. We're looking at, you know, the Center for Opportunity with United Way. They are a homeless shelter, they're full, they serve a need, they do testing for drugs and alcohol in the evening upon admission, so that is the difference. And I just want people to understand that we're not recreating or looking at providing services in addition. It's the gap services for the population that's the most vulnerable and most at risk that we're looking to meet the need. So just wanted to make that clear. Hopefully that's clear in this visual, in this infographic. So that brings me to the formation of a steering committee. And we have gotten to this point, I feel like this is the furthest that this has come in all the years of looking at a potential solution, is to get buy-in from community partners. I appreciate the city commission allowing me to start having conversations to see what we can do as a city of Bismarck, the largest city with stake in the game. So of course, we're part of the steering committee. Public health is leading some of the discussion and scheduling meetings and trying to get people organized. I did have some support from community development, of course, with planning, for purposes of planning and facilities. And then the police department, of course, is a key partner, and then just augmented support from administration as needed as well. But the three partners that have committed, and they've vetted this through their boards of directors to be part of the steering committee, is the Dakota Foundation, Ministry on the Margins, and then Mosaic Medical Detox. And as I had stated, Mosaic is the medical detox provider. It's not in operation as of yet, but she has a 501(c)(3) that is already established. She's just looking for community partnerships. So we are working with the Department of Health and Human Services for technical assistance, and that is kind of the bottom little bullet there. Obviously, people have done this in other communities and implemented community projects like this, and we're hoping to access some technical support to see what we can do to bring things together and have it come together here for us in the Bismarck-Mandan community. When we're talking about the steering committee and the roles and responsibilities of the key partners that I had mentioned, we're really looking at planning and strategic guidance for the project. We want to make sure that there's a vision and a framework to have a solution addressing the most critical needs for the individuals in our community. We want to make sure that the partners that are part of the group initially will provide some strategic direction and look at operations and what really needs to be provided when we're looking at putting a plan together, and then just oversight and accountability to make sure that we stay on track and keep moving things forward. So the next step in the process at this point is we're going to continue to meet. As the steering committee, we have some opportunities coming up in December to meet with the Department of Human Services and look at options for technical support and assistance to try to get us to that next step. But certainly, we'll provide more information as this develops, and just wanted to basically provide you with that brief update tonight and then give you an opportunity to ask questions if you have any.
Commissioners, do you have questions? I guess I have. One is, mine is just related to the steering committee, because I want to make sure we're not leaving out people who maybe need to be a part of it or because they're part of the community, or maybe you've extended invites and there's no willingness to participate. That's fine. But the city of Mandan, both counties, city of Lincoln, and then the hospitals or others from the Coalition, the Homeless Coalition, because it's made up of four, and I'm just afraid we have gaps right now.
Yep. I hear where you're coming from. I think at this point, we're trying to start with a small group and get our arms wrapped around what we need and what it could look like. It's just an initial steering committee to start small and kind of see what technical assistance we need to be able to get us to the next step. I think there will be opportunity to do additional outreach. There will be work groups. Obviously, we have to look at financial sustainability. What could that look like? Could there be a finance work group where we're bringing people and experts in moving forward? But at this point, I think the message is to just kind of keep the group small and focused, and then bring people in as we need them to. The initial meeting, the listening session that I had, I did extend out to all of those entities and were present. I think until they have more to maybe think about or more information to chew on, they may become more engaged as we kind of move forward in the process. But I'm hoping that with the technical assistance, that'll be the next step to get us to where we need to be for implementation, and then pull in additional partners. So this is in the very beginning stages. Obviously, it's not going to happen overnight. Lots of moving parts. We certainly won't leave out the other communities, though. I know that that is a huge factor in it, just have to time it right.
Okay. I just mostly make sure we're thinking about it and not, you know, I know it's in the beginning, but we can't leave them out because they're a part of the solution as well, I believe. Any other questions? Commissioner Cleary?
Mayor Commissioners, I can't speak, obviously, for the other communities, but I was just at a Homeless Coalition board meeting this week. Renee keeps them in the loop of what's happening. They're getting updates, and they, at the board meeting, they were very willing to participate when it was necessary or when the outreach started. So those conversations are happening, at least from what I was seeing, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Connolly?
In the discussions and things, some of the questions that might not get it answered are things that I'm hearing from other community members, too, and should be added to it, is that, like you said, there's nothing like this in the rest of the state. So not only would we be looking at people that are already a concern here, but what prevents us from becoming a sanctuary city to anybody within 200 miles and coming here? It's a small population of people that use a huge amount of resources, and it's, there's a cost at that. There's concern, and they're legitimate, and there's the dignity value that's come up across at this table. But I used to work in Jamestown and, at the state hospital, and they had extra outreach services that Bismarck and other areas of the state didn't offer. And there was some stigma that came with that, because that's where they went to treatment at the state hospital, and then they went to outreach, and it kind of changed the dynamic. Do we want to change the dynamics of Bismarck that way that create harder conversations? And I know the stress on ERs, and I've heard from doctors and different people, they are open 24/7, they're current, so this would be adding to that mix. And then, of course, the cost is property taxes, and all of those others have been a big part of the conversation. So is there state monies or those type of things that bring into this conversation to where it lowers the expectations locally? But hopefully, those all come up as well.
Yep. Obviously, that would be part of the planning process. With the technical support and just financial structure and models and location, none of that stuff has been talked about at this point, so, but certainly have it on the radar.
Any other questions? Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Item H, consider requests to pursue North Dakota DOT urban road, urban regional, and rail safety program projects. Gabe?
Sharelink wasn't working, so I have to go to my backup plan here. Okay. Mayor Commissioners, the item I have before you are the annual solicitation for the DOT programs of the urban roads, urban regional, and their rail safety program. The first item I would talk about would be the urban roads program. That program in particular is what we use to fund improvements such as our 43rd Avenue expansion project, our South Washington Street project that was constructed in 2024. Those are the types of projects that are on our roads within the city of Bismarck, but are eligible for federal aid because they're functionally classified. What I would propose for this solicitation, for a 2029 solicitation, is to not propose any projects for the MPO's funding package. These dollars that come into our community are shared between Bismarck, Mandan, Burley, Morton, and as well as Lincoln. In the last two solicitation cycles, Mandan has had a project that was the number-one project that came out of the Technical Advisory Committee, as well as the Policy Board, and in fiscal year '27 and in fiscal '28 that was not funded due to the DOT still working through some funding changes that they're working on. And so I think it's prudent for us to allow Mandan's project to be funded as the number-one priority, as it was the last two years, and really not even put forward a second project or third project for the DOT's consideration. The urban regional program is what I would consider the DOT's roadways that happen to be within the city of Bismarck. So those roadways are State Street, Bismarck Expressway, University Drive, 7th and 9th Street, that are state highways or have a state highway designation. So the work that we've seen in previous construction seasons of mill and overlays the last couple of years on those roadways in particular is funded through this program. What I have before you are five projects that we've asked for in the past that we've not received funding for, and it's no dig to DOT. We've given them lots of projects, and they've selected many of them. These would just be some of the ones that have not to be selected. These have been proposed in previous cycles, as noted, but these would be the five that we would recommend. The first is a regional roadway sign replacement project. When the DOT does a mill and overlay project, they don't typically replace the signs. That's a maintenance obligation that the locals have, but we have some signs on all of these regional highways that I think there's enough need that we could do a pretty large project of signage replacement on the state highway system. The next project I have is a 7th and 9th Street stormwater evaluation. This is looking at the underpass by, as it goes underneath the BNSF railroad on 7th Street here. Without fail, once a year, maybe even multiple times a year, we will find ourselves, for at least a period of time, sometimes multiple days, depending on how extreme the event is, with that underpass, it's filled up with water. So the request that we'd have with the DOT is just to look at what sort of options, kind of more of a planning analysis, to see what we can do, if there's a pump replacement, if there's a more robust solution that would work, or if not, what sort of communication do we need to provide to drivers so that they don't drive into this area during these snow or these rain events? The next project that I have is a signal replacement project on 7th Street Boulevard Avenue, as well as 9th Street and Boulevard Avenue. That's kind of the tail end of State Street as it transitions into Boulevard. Both of those signals are over 20 years old and are kind of at the end of their useful life, so we would look for a full replacement of those signal systems. The fourth project we have is a Tyler Parkway and I-94 westbound off-ramp traffic signal replacement. This is even older than, I think it looks like 1995 was the year of construction here. We've had a couple of maintenance issues on these signal poles that we've had to maintain. So we're looking for the DOT to look towards funding this project as well. And then the last project that I have for you in the urban regional system is the State Street Trail rehabilitation from Divide Avenue up to Calgary. This project, we did submit on through a different funding program, the Transportation Alternatives Program. So hopefully, we can continue to give the DOT multiple funding opportunities and multiple funding packages that they could consider to fund this sort of maintenance improvement on the existing trail that's there. The last item I have would be the Federal Rail Safety. This is a program that the DOT funds at 100% federal dollars, but it's for the work that they would typically pay the railroad to conduct. So the types of projects that we're looking for here, first is at 24th Street Railroad Crossing. The BNSF tracks are on the upper part of the screen, on the north side. The spurs or the sidings on the lower part is what we're working with BNSF to understand who the owner is and then what sort of replacement strategy or removal strategy, if some or part of those are no longer needed or warranted, to work with BNSF on that piece of it. So at a minimum, we'd look to replace them, but if there's an opportunity to remove one of the two, we would consider that as well. The next project is just down the proverbial street on 26th Street. This is the crossing at BNSF and 26th Street, where we would request funds to extend the crossing, the concrete crossing, so that we can cross pedestrians at this intersection and tie them into the sidewalks that we have north and sidewalks that we have south of this particular intersection. This was identified in the MPO's recent Safe Routes to Services Plan, as it's just a pedestrian corridor. As we look at barriers, as trying to walk places, there's not an ADA-accessible crossing of the railroad in this vicinity. So trying to find ways to get all of our citizens to be able to cross the road safely would be the concept that we're looking here. So with that, I take any questions that you have, but in summary, it's urban roads, no program or no projects requested, urban regional, the five that I went through here, and then are the Federal Rail Safety, the 24th Street and 26th Street crossing improvements.
Commissioners, any questions? What are your wishes?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zanker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item I, consider requests from city administrator to review and approve the department director recruiting process. Go ahead, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in January of this year, this board, I guess with a slightly different composition, approved an ordinance amendment that outlines the hiring process for, I'm sorry, not hiring process, hiring authority for department director positions within the city of Bismarck. And with that passage of the ordinance, the understanding was that staff, myself, would come back to you with a proposal on how to handle department director retirements, departures, hiring processes, so on and so forth. And so the process was outlined as an attachment in your agenda packet, but maybe I'll just go through and, of course, stand for questions as well, but kind of go through and share some of the thoughts that we had. When I say "we," I'm talking about myself, HR Director LeAnn Schmidt. We've had conversations with Mayor Schmitz as well on this particular process. And so maybe just a scenario, department director submits a resignation. So what do we do from there? The intent would be for the city administrator to come forward with a recruitment plan. It would be submitted to the commission with the following information. Job description, obviously, including the salary range, and a plan to effectively market the vacancy. Between myself and the HR director, we would propose a preferred number of applicants to interview. Generally, that number is three to five. Oftentimes, we find that there are some kind of natural breaks in the applications when they get scored and ranked initially. So five isn't a hard and fast number. If there are six really qualified applicants, obviously, we'd be looking to interview all six, but if there are simply three that stand out, then maybe three is sufficient. I can remember a number of different department director interviews in the past where we've had as few as two or three, and then as many as five for those processes. And then also, as part of the initial information that we'd be submitting would be a proposed timeline. Obviously, if we've got enough time to work with some overlap with directors, we'd be looking to do that in certain cases. Obviously, various positions, there could be various levels of time spent overlapping between the outgoing director and the incoming director. And I guess to, as it's noted in the memo, it says, "To preserve fairness for all applicants, the balance of the recruiting process would be handled administratively by the city administrator." Ultimately, this is to help avoid any sort of open records or public meetings that wouldn't be particularly necessary at that time. From there, we'll kind of go on, and again, the ordinance was approved. From there, we'll kind of go on, and again, the ordinance was approved as ordinance 90101. It says, "City administrator has full authority for hiring and termination and all usual ordinary supervisory responsibilities for the 11 positions that are protected by civil service." So, these positions do not include the assistant city administrator, the city attorney, or my position as the administrator. We would obviously develop a series of screening questions that would be pertinent to the position, making sure we're looking for skills, leadership experience, relative, professional experience. And part of the process would continue the same. The applicants, the final applicants that would be interviewed would be required to participate in the general management in basket assessment as well as participate in the accomplishment survey. The accomplishment survey can have a couple different components to it. Oftentimes, it's a written component, but then you can add on a kind of a second feature to that, and that would be more or less a, I don't want to call it another interview, but it would be a committee assembled to review the accomplishment survey, and then that committee would meet with each individual applicant and engage in the information that they had provided in a written summary. More or less a way to kind of check and balance their participation, their understanding of the project, and just overall professional engagement as well. And then, the final step, obviously, is the face-to-face interview, and if you look towards the end of the memo, it says, "For all department director recruiting and examinations for non-appointed positions, the final oral interview must include, at a minimum," and this is where the change is quite evident. The intent would be to have myself, the city administrator, the HR director, the mayor, a portfolio holder, or the portfolio holder for that specific department, and then a general member of the public or staff. And when I say "staff," I would be thinking of a situation where there may be a department that would work complementary to the position that is being sought, and so to have that subject matter expert or professional experience there to really dig into the granular details, I think, would be important. Couple things to note, a few things to note. Number one, obviously, if we would be looking for an HR director, there would be a little different composition to that final interview group because if the outgoing director is part of the selection committee for their successor, that may not be necessary or even appropriate. Also, it should be noted, the library director and the SENCOM director both report to different boards, and so those boards facilitate that hiring process. And so, that would be separate and outside of all of this. The other thing, we did spend quite a bit of time talking about kind of unique positions, and one of the unique positions that comes to mind is the police chief. And in a lot of cities, you'll see that position as a position of prominence and a position that a lot of people look to, to effectively keep the community safe. And so, if we get to a spot like that where we've got one of those unique larger positions, as I noted earlier, the final oral interviews must include, at a minimum, those particular individuals. So, if we get to a spot where we're looking for a police chief, the commission might want to say, you know, "This is a really important position for the entire community." Maybe that interview group broadens beyond just this group, and it includes more of the commission or the entire commission as well. Other positions in that category, I guess I would defer to you on that, but for now, I think the police chief is the one that really stands out as the, is kind of the exceptional piece, in addition to, of course, the appointed positions where commission would have full jurisdiction over the assistant city administrator, the administrator, and the city attorney position. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them, and it should be noted, we do have a director resignation. Michelle Klose has announced her retirement for first quarter of next year, and so this process is, quite frankly, something that we will be initiating here very quickly. The position is not posted yet. Michelle has been doing some review of the existing job description, making sure that it's an accurate representation of the work that she is doing, and any of those additional changes would be amended and implemented into that position before it would be posted on the website.
Commissioners, questions? Okay. Don't look like, yep.
We would, yeah, we would need a motion if you're comfortable with the proposal as it's drafted.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
What discussion do we have? Hearing done, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Okay. Before we get to item J, I'm going to move other business ahead of item J because that way, if there's other business, it can be more public than failing to do that. So, do we have any other business, commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Last meeting, we dealt with the change in the garbage pickup, and I, of course, supported that. Since that time, I've heard from a number of citizens very concerned about picking up leaves in the fall, and I've seen it in my neighborhood, bags and bags of leaves on the street, and this year, of course, we picked them up. I'd just like to discuss and just bring it to the attention of the commission, that I'd like to discuss with the commission and with Public Works the possibility of enhancing some services next fall in regards to picking up leaves. Fargo does this, they pick up from mid-October to mid-November, the crews go out and they pick up leaves. They'll pick up the bags and the dump trash cans, and then they sort them out and throw the bags away. Grand Forks actually allows you to put your leaves, rake them to the Boulevard, and they vacuum them up. And I don't know what the right answer is, but I know a lot of folks in the community do not have pickup trucks or trailers, and they'd like a little assistance in picking up some of these leaves. So, I would like to bring this forward and maybe ask Public Works to look at some options for us, and perhaps, you know, we did away with fall cleanup, we did away with picking up extras, and we could probably enhance some services as far as picking up leaves just for, you know, October to November, or one week or two weeks in the fall.
Commissioner Clary.
Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Risch, after receiving your email about some of the contact that you've had, Steve and I have talked a little bit, so I don't know, Steve, do you want to come up here and kind of, maybe we can give you some direction? Like you said, there's some other cities that have solutions for things like this, like Fargo and Grand Forks. With the elimination of the regular way we do extras and cleanup week only being in the spring, is there some variation of like a leaf cleanup week or weeks that we could do in the fall? Was kind of something Steve and I thought maybe he could look into more and come back to us with concepts of what that could look like for Bismarck, because I don't think, based off of what I've learned of how Fargo and Grand Forks do it, I don't think that either model of the way that either of them do it would seamlessly work for Bismarck's crews, but I think that maybe if we give Steve the opportunity, I mean, we'd have months to figure out what we could offer or how we could offer something, so if you just want to.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Schmitz, Commissioners. We can definitely do that. We can definitely look into some sort of an option that we could try to figure out on how we can best collect those, get the leaves. Our first option or priority would hopefully be to recycle them. If that doesn't work, we can't come up with an option for that, maybe we can find some other way to at least collect them. And so, we'll look into that, I'll look into the manpower of everything, and I'll bring that back at a later time. Like you said, we have quite some time now before we're going to be into the leaf collection, but we'll bring something back for you to consider.
Okay. Commissioner Risch, is that?
Yeah, that's excellent, Steve, Mr. Mayor Commissioners. I really think it's a terrible idea to fill up all these plastic bags and fill up our new four-and-a-half-million-dollar landfill hole. It'd be so much better if we could recycle them in some manner, create mulch or something to that effect.
Okay. So, thank you. Is there any other business? I'll wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving before we move to, if we can go to executive session then.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under century code 44-04-19 regarding contract negotiations and strategy. Under section 4404419-1.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, let's call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. We'll move to executive session here in a moment.